And first we'll have a roll call.
Okay. Member Kane?
Here.
Member Crowley?
Here.
Member Elmer?
Here.
Member Starsnake Dean?
Here.
Member Mainz? Vice Chair Winika?
Here.
Chair Lantis?
Here. I'm both. I didn't, I heard my last name, so I might want to try Vice Chair Winika.
Yep. And then it looks like we have a quorum.
All right. And it looks like, I didn't hear him, but it looks like Commissioner Mainz is on...
On Zoom.
Is on Zoom. So, and have we heard from Commissioner Winika?
He is not going to be here tonight.
Okay. All right. First thing I'd like to do is down under Public Hearings, that's mislabeled on a final plat, there is no public hearing, so it will just be, we'll have discussion and motions to modify, accept or modify. So, next on the agenda is Public Comments, and this is person who, persons who wish to address the City Planning Commission regarding items on the agenda may do so as that item is called. Persons who wish to address the City Planning Commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the City Planning Commission may do so at this time when called upon by the Chair. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court or with other outside tribunals are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Any public comment entered via online chat will not be recognized or commented upon. Any presentation is for informational purposes only. The Planning Commission will take comments under advisement. Are there any public comments this evening on items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no one raise their hand, at this time I would like to ask the Planning Commission members to make a declaration of any conflict of interest or of any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides on any item on the agenda so that they might come to a fair decision. Everybody shaking their head? No? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Hidden Lakes Final Plat, and that would be Jenna Hillier.
What do you think? Make sure you can hear me. Am I wired for sound? Okay, great. So, we have the Hidden Lakes. Uh-oh. We're having a, there we go. My arrow button wasn't working. Hidden Lake Subdivision Development Final Plat. Anderson Engineering submitted the final plat for Hidden Lake Subdivision Phase One on May 25th of 2023, which was the, right after our meeting that day. In Phase One, the applicant is proposing an approximate 8.95 acre residential subdivision located at the east of the intersection of 19th and Princeton Street, and it is Zoned R2. This plat consists of 25 lots, 24 of which are single-family residential use. There's an additional lot tracked for community use. The plat includes public street construction, dedication with new utilities, sidewalks, street lighting, and stormwater collection and management. Hidden Lakes preliminary plat was reviewed by Planning Commission and City Commission for the approval of a variance for the street right-of-way of less than 45 feet, which did not meet the minimum right-of-way width required for subdivision regulations that requires a minimum width of 60 feet. The variance was approved by Planning Commission on January 11th and by City Commission on February 1st of this year. The proposed preliminary plat is in substantial compliance with the subdivision regulations, zoning requirements for our two districts, and the proposed development is consistent with comprehensive plans and complements the current and anticipated future use of surrounding properties. The developer has addressed the majority of the complaints and concerns, not complaints, concerns, regarding the preliminary plat. With traffic, stormwater, and sewer, fire and emergency service, and access, and is continuing to finalize details for the final plat that will be needed, need to be accepted by the city engineer prior to approval. That actually needs to be amended. I think we're in good, as far as the plat goes, they have met the requirements that we have asked them. The additional things that need to be addressed will be, will come, are being ironed out with the construction drawings and infrastructure. But we did have some concerns with several items with the preliminary plat before. So the three things that were of concern was the stormwater plan for the subdivision that needed to be approved by a city engineer for potential flooding that would be minimized. Also, the traffic flow impacts would need to be addressed acceptably in the changes with 19th Street. And access to the property owners' driveways during construction be effectively addressed with two property owners that were going to be affected. This evening I have Mica from Anderson Engineering online with us to be able to address those concerns or the changes that were made in regards to the changes with 19th Street and also the stormwater. Mica, are you available? I saw him online. He may be muted.
Is he there? Is he muted, or can you tell?
I did see him on earlier.
He is muted? Okay. Mica, if you could unmute, and we'd like to ask you some questions on...
Someone has put a comment in the chat.
I cannot see them.
Yeah, we have, is there somebody that has control and can look at the chat bubble and see? There's four.
So, someone, Mica was saying that...
We're muted.
That was from earlier.
Okay. Commissioner Mainz, can you hear us now?
Okay, well, this isn't going according to plan.
I can hear you guys now.
Okay.
This is Patrick Brum.
Patrick, would you be able to speak to the stormwater, the drainage plan that we have in place? I have pulled up on my screen the drainage plan from the plat received on 5/25.
I am here.
Or Mica. Okay, Mica. Perfect.
Yeah. I'm the engineer, and I can speak to that if you'd rather.
Would you mind covering for us what we discussed in the last meeting and explain the drainage, the changes that are happening with the drainage? I know that there, it's going to be, it's been changed since the preliminary plat.
Only minorly. The overall drainage patterns match what we proposed in the preliminary plat and matches the drainage report that we provided to David Hamid, City Engineer, for his review. The changes, as I said, are minor, are mostly with regards to how we get the stormwater runoff to the proposed detention pond. But what that will do is that will restrict our flows from, to match what the existing conditions are. So, according to speculations we have, what leaves our site will be leaving at the same rate as existing conditions, which is a typical goal that we shoot for with detention ponds. But as can be seen on the map that is currently pulled up, there is proposed to be a system of both underground pipes with carbonless to capture the runoff, as well as erosion control measures and concrete drainage channels throughout the site to help make sure that everything gets to the pond in a controlled manner, and then leaves the site again in a controlled manner.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for him on this ish, this item? Okay, what is, what was item number two?
The change in the traffic patterns for 19th Street.
Do we have somebody on here that can comment on that?
Mica can also speak to this, as well as Dennis Tharp is here. They can comment on this as well.
I'll speak to that as well. So, per the discussion that was had, it was deemed, it was determined that we should not fully close off South Princeton Street. So, we worked with Public Works as well as the city engineer to develop a plan to still allow South Princeton Street to be accessed from the main northbound one-way. So, what that will now be, and is shown in the upper-left corner of the site plan, is we will have a 12-foot wide strip of pavement that will connect from South Princeton up north, and it will be a one-way only. So, the northbound traffic will be able to make that slight right turn onto the smaller, more local street. On the north side of that, where we connect to the rest of the existing roadway there, there is going to be some additional signage to help further make aware drivers that are coming south that they cannot continue this way. We are also showing to remove the existing pavement that is in excess of what is needed for this one single lane. So, it'll just be a grassy area, so it should be abundantly clear that this was a one-way north only, and will help to alleviate the traffic concerns that the local neighbors had.
Okay. Director Tharp, would you like to make any...
Don't know that I have anything to add to that. We had several discussions, went through several iterations of what this might look like. I think everybody was in agreement with this is what made the most sense.
Okay. Third item.
Is the, this is another image of the traffic patterns, but also it highlights here the two driveways that will be impacted, the two residents, with, I have boxes here on the screen, I'm not sure if you can see it there, of how they intend to work with those residents to allow them access to your driveways and their properties during construction and/or after. Mica has a little more detail on that than I do.
Yes. So, for both of these driveways on the north and south side, we're proposed to replace them. The north one is going to match back exactly where it is now, but in order to allow utility access to the site, we need to replace it, as well as allows for the roadway grades to better match standard design by allowing us to cut a little bit more through that area. So, the driveway on the north side, again, we're replacing to match exactly as it is now. On the south side, we had to shift the driveway further east to comply with intersection distance requirements that are outlined in the city standard specifications. Both, or the driveway on the south has been located with talks with that property owner, and we are in the process of, for both the north and south property owners, guaranteeing construction easements for the two driveways and coordinating these two driveway plans with the property owners.
So, you have spoken to the property owners, and they are, sounds like they're going to sign off on these designs?
Yes, sir. The developer has been in touch with these property owners, and will provide the city with recorded easements once we have those in place.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Mica? For Mica?
I'm...
Granite?
My question is, I don't know if you saw the neighbors out here, whenever the question was, "Have you spoken with the neighbors and they've signed off?" They're shaking their head no.
I don't believe they've signed off.
Question is, when, when did you speak with them? Can I ask that question?
You can ask a question.
I have not personally. From what I've been told from the developer, I was under the understanding that they have been in touch with property owners about this. If I am incorrect in that, I apologize. That was the information I was made aware of.
So, the developer...
If they have not, I'll, we'll go ahead and let them know that they need to get on that. I was, yeah, sorry. To reiterate, I wasn't under the impression they had them.
We're just talking about the two properties immediately adjacent to the road, not, not the general neighborhood, but the two properties immediately adjacent.
The property on the north side of the roadway and the property on the south side of the roadway. Okay. Anything else?
No, sir. That is the end of my presentation.
Do you have any questions for Mica or for Director Tharp or for Jenna before we continue?
I know we've asked this question about other developments before, but when we're looking at that series of storm drains and the pond and all of the underground work as well, who maintains that 20 years from now? Is this going to be an HOA, or how is that going to be kept up down the line?
I know that there are plans for there to be an HOA in place for this development, but I'm not sure where they're at in that process. I can follow up on that, or perhaps if there's someone online who can speak to that.
And then my only other question is for Dennis Tharp, which is, I know one of the concerns was the speed of the road changing right there at that intersection. Has that been addressed further?
It's being worked on. It will happen.
So, was there anyone online that would be able to address the question that Mr. Starsnake...
About the HOAs.
Yeah, the HOA in the infrastructure.
This is Derek. Could you guys hear me?
Yes.
This is Derek Hamilton, the developer. Yeah, so the HOA won't come until after year 15. This is a rental development, so it'll be managed by our management company, and they'll maintain all the common space until, until the homes are sold. But they have to remain rental for the first 15 years as part of our financing.
And there was indications that you were the, that your organization was to talk to the homeowners on the north and the south side of the proposed street to address their concerns on egress to their properties. Who from your organization's done that?
Well, we had initial discussions at the beginning. We're waiting for the attorneys to draft the easements, and then we'll get back in contact with both the neighbors on the north and the south.
Okay, thank you. All right. We've added some language that now says, "This is not a public, a hearing, but we say persons who wish to address the City Planning Commission regarding items on the agenda may do so as the agenda item is called." And I do see some people out here, and if someone has some comments, I'd like to ask them to come to the microphone, state their name, state what their comment is, but keep it brief, please. So, is there someone that would like to come to the front?
So, regarding the driveway to the south...
I'm sorry. Please state your name and where you live.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Philip Martin and Kathy Martin, 1905, South Princeton.
We're on the south side of the property with the driveway discussion.
Okay.
So, the last discussions we had with the developer was through email. The last response we got from them was in February. I believe it was March, first part of March, I asked them to make us whole, and that is to cover the cost of putting in the, the driveway. We've not heard back from them, nor have we seen this new plat that was submitted on May 25th. Obviously, we follow the city, so we saw it on the city. But previously, the developer had sent those to us for the preliminary plat. We're just lucky we found out this meeting was happening tonight.
And at the initial meeting, I asked that we get a privacy fence, as I do work night shifts, and they were supposed to get back with me on that, and they did not.
Okay.
Thank you.
It sounds like it's in the, it sounds like it's in the hands of, at this point, their attorney, which means we, none of us know anything. So, we'll discuss that in just a few minutes. But they haven't talked to you, so to be clear, they haven't talked to you since February, and you haven't seen any agreement or any proposed plan so far. Okay, thanks.
We didn't even get this. Like, we initially got the preliminary one in the mail. We didn't get anything.
Well, see, that was because of the notice we're required to give for the public hearing. And on this one, since there is no public hearing, there wouldn't, they wouldn't be required to provide notice. So, that would be the reason.
In January, though, they said they would have another meeting with the neighbors, and they did not.
It never happened?
It never happened.
Okay.
We've had no conversation, no face-to-face with them.
All right. Well, we appreciate your comments. We'll take them into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary and Karen Harris, 1801, South Princeton.
Okay.
First off, I want to thank Mr. Tharp for the time he spent on the traffic issue on Princeton Street, addressing that. It wasn't 100% what I wanted, but they made an effort, and I'm willing to make sacrifice too. So, I'm not being totally unreasonable with it. And Mr. Tharp spent a lot of time with that, trying to make that a reasonable solution. As far as the stormwater is concerned, when we spoke the last time here, after the meeting, Mr. Souters and the developer assured us that they would get with us to come up with a viable solution for it. There were two solutions offered, which I offered to contribute to, to install. One of them would have been dealing directly with me and me alone to fix it. The other one was going to involve Mr. Fogel and Loma Vista Nursery. As of this morning, they had not reached out to Loma Vista Nursery or Mr. Fogel about it, and they certainly haven't reached out to me in reference to the stormwater issue. So, nothing has been solved on the stormwater, contrary to what Mr. Souter just said.
And they haven't reached out to any of the neighbors as they said they would. So, it's, they're saying that they have, they haven't.
Just, just like these folks said, we were assured that they would reach out to us and have another meeting where everybody would be invited, get all of these concerns addressed. No, they have not. The last interaction I had with them was when they set the, got the preliminary plat sent out. They emailed me and asked me if I was going to bid on the work, and I very directly told them that my participation and role in that project is going to depend entirely upon what happens with Princeton Street and what they do with the stormwater. I never got a response, good, bad, indifferent, or, hey, we're going to get with you and work on it. Nothing. They misrepresented themselves when they came to town initially by saying that they contacted all of the neighboring landowners.
They even said they had a meeting with all of us. They didn't.
They didn't.
And they've never, ever, ever once reached out to any of us.
Then, after the last meeting, they said, oh, we'll get back with you. And they haven't reached out to us. I know they haven't reached out to Mrs. Couch that lives next door to us. They haven't reached out to these folks.
Or the Dietzes.
Or the Dietzes. So, everything they've said is incorrect. Appreciate your choice of words. Wasn't easy.
Okay, so, if I'm hearing everything right, the only thing that we've resolved to somewhat resolve is the entrance and exit on Princeton. Is that correct? That there's been no discussion with the landowners on the stormwater, and there's been no discussion with the landowners involved on the driveways since the preliminary discussion that we had that night?
And we requested a fence too, because we're the entire north side, which means all that construction trash, all of the other, we get Walmart trash, and Walmart's even farther.
Yeah.
So, we said, you know, it would be great to have a fence there to catch the trash before it comes into our house, because we're going to be picking up trashes, we're going to be doing all the time. They're going to flood us, and they're going to wash downstream because of trash. But they've not, anything, nothing.
Okay.
My offer on the stormwater solutions, like I said, there's a couple of different solutions. My offer still stands. I will help. I will participate. But what I would ask the commission to do is to not approve their final plat until these issues are resolved. If they get their final plat approved where they can go ahead and move forward, there's no way to hold their feet to the fire.
And they've lied coming out of the gate from the word go. So, why wouldn't they continue to lie? Personally, I live here. I'm raising my family here. Our businesses are here. And why would I want a company to come in, I'm out of state, but lies from the word go? They're going to lie all the way through.
Well, that's, we're not going to get into that, at least, but...
No, but it's, you're a businessman.
We, we understand your concerns. You haven't been contacted, and the issues have not been resolved to your satisfaction, so...
They haven't been resolved at all.
Yeah.
We've lived there, be 21 years in October.
September.
September. When we first moved there, the back part of our property was actually out in the county. The city annexed all the way around us. I didn't like it, but I didn't fight it because I didn't figure there was a whole lot I could do about it. But I stayed over there in my little corner of town to be left alone and leave people alone, and I don't appreciate them coming in from out of state and poking me through the back fence.
Well, we will, sometimes we don't have a choice where the money comes from to deal with issues in our community, but we appreciate your concerns, and we'll discuss them. So, do you have any other, do you have any drainage, trash, construction trash, fencing? And those are your issues. And then their issues are the driveways. Okay?
And, like I said before, do I like the development? No. But by the same token, I had the same opportunity to buy that piece of property that they did, and I chose not to. So, I really can't complain too much about the development. I'm stuck with that part. But what they do to me in the processes, process of the development, I do have some say, and I will speak up.
Yeah. Well, we appreciate your comments. Thank you. Commissioners, questions, comments? Silence.
Well, I guess what I would say, also doing this for a living and having, talking with what Gary said, and I know we made comments in the past about this being above certain people's pay grade, that we have to trust, we have a city engineer that checks the way developments are designed, and the way the developments are designed is to show that the floodwaters are not affecting the adjacent landowners. And we have to trust that our city engineer has checked this engineer's work to make sure that it's not affecting the adjacent landowners. So, we can't sit here and say, "We don't want to approve this," or "we do want to approve this" based off of a, off of a neighbor's concern because it's been engineered. So, when we make the comment that this is above our pay grade, that, that's what we mean by that, that this has been designed by an engineer and checked by another engineer, and two engineers are saying that this is okay, one of them representing the adjacent landowners, saying that this is not going to affect the adjacent landowners.
So, when you say, "Works for the adjacent landowners," you mean because they're...
Because they're the city engineer.
Contacted by their city. They're the city engineer.
Yeah.
They're supposed to be protecting the city. I agree with that 100%.
I do see another thing on here, the utility easement. I don't know if this is something that should be cleaned up now, but there was an existing easement here that is actually a bigger easement than what the, than what the utility easement's going to be on the recorded plat. And I would think they would want to change that so that the, so that the recorded easement matches the existing one. See what I'm talking about? This is an existing, and the higher, and the lighter one is a new one. I would think they would want that to match. But that's, that's my comment on the, on the storm. We have to, we have to trust the engineers that do this for a living. And then I would also, I'm kind of curious what the developer is saying about the fence issue, what their plans are with the fence.
I was unclear on if that was a temporary fence during the construction process, or if that was a permanent fence.
I'm not sure what...
That the neighbors were asking for.
It's, I'm not entirely sure. It sounds like it's a permanent...
A permanent fence.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate that developers may not be at a stage yet where they're ready to present their, their plan with the neighbors, but I am a little concerned to be hearing that perhaps they haven't been in touch with the neighbors they should have been in touch with. So, I hope that that will be rectified.
Their initial meeting that they had with the, it was here, so it appeared to be a public, a city-run thing, but it was actually a courtesy meeting that they had with the neighbors prior to, and their follow-up with, whether or not they told them they were going to do more of that nature or not, I'm not aware of that. It was something between them and the... It was something between them and the residents, so I can't speak to that, but perhaps somebody online would be able to chime in, but I don't have that information.
Yeah, this is, this is Derek again. I'll speak up since I'm the one being accused of being a liar. So I think the way I left it with Mr. Harris was, I'll go back and find my emails, but, you know, the city, our engineers, we're meeting and actually reducing the stormwater discharge based on the engineering. But what I told him was, once we get costs for the entire project, I'll know, I have a better idea of if we can afford to do anything additional. And right now, we're still working on costs. We have to get through this process and get the plans approved to, to know that we're bidding the right plans. As far as the fence, I'll have to ask Sean, I think he was the one that reached out to them at first, where they left off on that, but, you know, if it's, if there's room in the budget, we're happy to do that. I honestly don't know, you know, a privacy fence, I don't think is going to help noise that much during construction, but, you know, we'll try to be good neighbors everywhere we go, so, you know, that's, that's where we left it. As far as the neighbor meeting, I think the original gentleman that was with the city that's no longer there, I think in the preliminary plat meeting, it suggested a neighborhood meeting, and then the city later came back and said that, you know, we didn't need to do that, so that's why we haven't done that. But, I mean, I think everyone has our contact information. If there's concerns and they want to reach out to us, or if we need to have another meeting, we can. But we're trying to get a budget put together and see what, what, if anything additional, we can do, over and above what's required.
So as it deals with, as it deals with the agreement to make the north and south properties, which I'm just going to refer to them that way, whole, so they have proper access to their properties, how do we hold our feet to the fire?
Absolutely. We understand providing them, you know, a new driveway with access is our requirement. We absolutely understand that, never, never argued that at all. We're just, I think the email went out to the attorney from the engineer two days ago about what, what we needed as far as access agreements, so we can present those to both the north and south neighbors. So he's working on those, and then once, once we get a draft of those, we can present those to each family.
Okay, sir, I wasn't, I wasn't questioning what you were doing. What I was, what I had was a question for the city on process, the city staff on process. How do we assure after, after, this is our last contact with this project. How do we assure after we take action, should we go forward and recommend to the city and the city approve it, who assures the, the landowners adjacent that they will have access if we don't have that in place before we approve the plat?
Well, Melanie, if you'll be able to speak a little bit more to, would this be part of a development agreement? Question?
Not typically.
Not typically.
But we could.
Yeah, no. Let us know who you are.
Thank you. Melanie Landis, I'm the acting community development director. We do, because there is public infrastructure involved, and we do have a development agreement, or we will have a development agreement, we don't have one in place yet. We could potentially, and I'm not going to tell you, yes, we can, I will need to check with our legal on this, on how we develop that agreement, but we could potentially put some language in there that says that these, that particular items would be addressed prior to approval of that infrastructure. Typically, the development agreement talks about security for making sure that that infrastructure actually occurs, so that should the development not move forward for whatever reason, the city is not left with needing to complete partially constructed infrastructure. And that is, that is everything from streets, water, storm sewer, sewer, all of those things, sidewalks even, are typically included in that development agreement. So I will check with legal to see how we could address that, but I would say that, you know, that might be one way we could address it. Again, it's not something I can answer specifically, though. Reiterate this again.
So if we approve this, now we don't know whether or not that's an option?
Correct. I mean, I can't give you an answer this evening. And this would have been one of the items that we would have probably discussed at our study session. Had we had a full discussion on this item at our, at our last study session, we didn't have a quorum, we didn't have a full discussion, so only basic information was provided. So what you're seeing this evening, we understand, this is probably the first time that we've actually had a conversation about this. Should we need to push this out, I would assume that we could declare our next study session to be a regular meeting instead, and you could consider action at that time if you wanted to do so, if you want to give us time to be able to answer a couple of those questions. That might just be an, an opportunity for you to think about. Other than that, I'm not sure what else I can do yet, just this evening for the approval item.
Well, if I'm, if I'm hearing the developer right, he technically wasn't ready for this. If he's waiting on, if he's waiting on letters from attorneys for people, maybe, maybe he's not quite ready yet, because if, if he had the letters from the attorneys, then this probably wouldn't be an issue, correct?
Yeah.
I might, I might chime in here. This is Patrick Bruni. I work with Derek. I mean, listen, I know it's a little outside of the normal course of a development agreement, but we've worked with a lot of cities and a lot of neighbors, and if, and if getting a fence built and a couple of driveways in that development agreement is what makes everybody feel comfortable with this, we'd be absolutely fine doing that. You know, things move around in these developments, there's a lot of moving parts. We've always been good neighbors. We've got a lot of cities and a lot of neighbors that we work with who would tell you the same thing. We'd be happy to do that if we can get this settled tonight.
Well, there you go. Then it's not a question about budget.
So it's a matter of getting it in writing? Do we want it in writing?
If they're agreeing to it, can it legally be put in, or is it, I don't know enough?
I'm not legal representation, and I can't, I don't have access to them this evening.
Commissioner Mains, do you have any comments, concerns? Is he on?
I'm not sure he's on.
Is he?
Yes, he is on.
He is, okay.
Well, can we make a motion based on the agreement that they're, that they're stating? That it can be added to the development agreement? Can we make that motion and move forward that, that way?
But we have no guarantee.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, we have no guarantee that it can be added to the development agreement, agreement. That's why she was saying that we could possibly push this off to our next meeting, the study session.
That's what I'm saying. If, if, I would make a motion for approval based on the fact that what they're saying that they would do can be added to the development agreement. And if they can't, then we have to see it again.
Something in writing. I'm sorry.
Do you have a motion on the floor?
Is there a second?
So basically, well, well, I guess we need a second before discussion.
Hold on, hold on. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second if we, if we get it.
Okay.
No, you're right. We can't discuss.
Okay, discussion now on the motion. Let's let Director Landis speak to it first. You might answer your question.
Yeah.
I would, I would, Director Tharp and I were just discussing, if, if there is, even if it's not a normal item that we would put into the development agreement, if they're agreeing that we would have some sort of agreement, we will work with them to get something in writing so that we can make sure that that is the direction that we're all heading in. But because I don't have legal here, I don't know what that agreement may look like. I'm not saying it couldn't be part of the development agreement. It could be, but otherwise, they're stating publicly that they would be happy to, to enter into an agreement like that, so we could move in that direction.
I say, in principle, we have an agreement, we just don't have it on paper yet.
Yeah, correct. Correct.
Now, what's your question, Commissioner?
That, that was pretty much answering it. Yep, good. We're all in the same mind. Thanks.
Question?
I just, I just want some clarification. Jenna, whenever you were on, like, the second page of your reading, you had your summary, the action today, analysis. At the end of the analysis, you had said that, that, you had said that that would need to be updated. That last sentence is that sewer, fire, emergency services access and continuing finalized details of the final plat will need to be accepted by the city engineer and approve, to the approval of final plat. And that needs to be updated?
No, I misspoke. It is actually fine the way that it is. The, the things that need to be addressed will be addressed in the construction drawings and the infrastructure. So those are the items that, that need to be addressed.
Okay.
The final plat is, is fine.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted it clarified, because it didn't, I was reading it and I was hearing it a little bit different.
Other comments? We have a motion on the floor to, though I guess we don't have. We kind of got the cart before the horse. I'm going to table that motion for just a minute. And do we have a motion to accept the findings as our own, or do we want to modify the findings? And I don't hear anybody that wants to modify them. Do we have a motion to accept the findings as presented as our own?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Crowley?
I'll second.
Commissioner Sturznic Dean, which call roll, please.
Vice Chair Winicka. Member Elmer.
Yes.
Member Mains.
Continue on.
There are five chats.
Member Crowley?
Yes.
Chair Lantis?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Seven now.
And then Member Sarstik Dean?
Yes.
See if there are any. Motion's been accepted.
I don't think they can hear us.
He said yes in the chat.
Okay. All right, so we have a, we have a motion on the floor, and correct me, please correct me if this is not right. We have a motion on the floor to accept the, to modi, I'm sorry, to recommend to the city commission the approval of the final plat with the language in the development agreement being added to protect the interest of the purchases as it, or the adjacent property owners as it goes to the fence and egress and ingress to their properties.
Correct.
Okay. Any more discussion on that motion? Hearing none, which call the roll.
Member Sarstik Dean?
Yes.
Vice Chair Winicka. Member Elmer?
Yes.
Member Mains? Member Crowley?
Yes.
Chair Lantis?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Thank you. So we recommend approval with those conditions. The minutes of the last study session and meeting, we didn't have a chance to look at those at the study session. Will those be continued until the next study session? Do we need to make a motion on them?
They will be continued the next study session. We'll have, we'll have four to review.
We'll have four, okay, all right. Any other new business?
No, sir.
All right, announcements. The next regularly scheduled planning commission study session meeting will be Thursday, June 29th, 2023 at noon, and the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting will be Wednesday, July 12th, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Member Crowley and seconded by Member Kane, all in.